All right, good evening. I don't need to make. Good evening, everybody. We are now reconvening an open session. Good evening. Thank you for coming this evening. So now I'm going to continue with my script. I'm only missing one member, so we're good. All right, so welcome, everyone. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may use Acton TV's YouTube channel found at the top of the agenda. This meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV's website at actontv.org. We are going to call to order our budget hearing. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Here we go. So I have to wait until 7:05.
You've got one minute, girl.
No, I have less than one minute. Nope, not according to my watch. Okay, we're all, we are going to do this awkward hold for these 10 seconds, and then at 7:05, I'm going to call this meeting. And bam, here we go. Noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee FY '24 Annual Budget Hearing to order. Detailed budget material is posted with the February 16th, 2023 School Committee Meeting Materials on the Acton, I mean, on the abschools.org website. Oh, do I need to read all that out? I don't have to read out the whole URL, do I? I hope not. Okay, so also note that a vote on the proposed FY '24 budget and assessments will be done at the next ABRSC meeting on March 16th, 2023, not tonight. Really quick, Beth, do I need to read that whole URL for where the budget is posted? Okay. Just want to make sure I get it all right. We're all set. We are in fully compliance. Are you ready, Peter? Dave, are you joining? Mr. Fertilino is pulling up a chair, and then we're going to get started. Thank you, Beth. We are all clearly loose this evening. Good evening, y'all. We're getting it together. Good gentlemen, are you ready? Let's go.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, you know, if you recall, two weeks ago, we were here for our budget workshop, which was an opportunity not only for the committee but for members of the community to come in and be able to hear really in-depth presentations on the FY '24 budget, but also an opportunity for members of the community to be able to ask questions about different aspects of the FY '24 budget. Tonight, we're coming in for the FY '24 budget hearing, which is a little bit different because it's not really a question-and-answer period, but it's an opportunity for the public to make comments that they want the committee to consider about the FY '24 budget before your final vote two weeks from tonight. And so I want to give a very, very brief and high-level overview of the FY '24 budget, and then we will open it up for public comment on the FY '24 budget. Once we close the hearing, we'll come back. We have a little bit more information about Chapter 70 that we want to present to you, and then an opportunity for the committee to discuss the FY '24 budget again, and then we'll resume kind of the normal flow of agenda that we typically have. So this is, again, just a reminder of where we are in the timeline. We've had a long budget process that began December 15th. It actually began well before that with the school committee through the subcommittee voting, you know, the goals, priorities for the budget, giving the administration direction about how you wanted us to approach the budget. That really actually began in September of this year. So it's been a long process, but in terms of full committee presentation schedules, we are on, actually, it says Presentation 5, but I'm reminding you, it's actually the sixth presentation of the budget that we've done and be able to receive feedback. We're working backwards. We're in the budget hearing right now, and next meeting, which is March 16th, we're going to be asking for the final budget vote. That is 45 days, per the regional agreement, before the earliest town meeting, and that vote is 2/3 of the weighted full votes of the school committee. And then we're preparing for our town meetings on May 1st and May 8th. Just as a reminder, we spend just about state average in terms of per pupil expenditure. We serve about 5,200 students. We have, it says here, about 800 employees, but it's actually higher than that because this is excluding some of our bus drivers and other employees in the district just because of the way ClearGov, which is where we got this information, categorizes staff in order to be able to compare district to district. We are serving about 10%, almost 11% students are economically disadvantaged, almost 5% of our students qualify as English language learners, and almost 15% receive special education services. We're seeing a significant change, however, over the last few years in the population of students that we're serving and the needs of students as they evolve. One of the largest increases we've seen over recent years has been in our English language learner or multilingual learner population. The population, as you know, and I've said multiple times this year, just since the start of this school year, since we've enrolled students this year, we've actually had over 100 multilingual learners join the district who require services, and that is the only budget addition that we're proposing for next year to English language educators. We also are seeing an increase in the population of our low-income or economically disadvantaged families, and that makes us really think deeply about the needs that our students and families have and how we serve them. We also, and this doesn't necessarily show up in traditional data, but we know that some or many of our students are increasing, are continuing to have lagging skills, either academically or what we're really seeing still are social emotionally, and that's both at the elementary and secondary level. We're seeing significant needs in those areas. There's a significant need for increased mental health and behavioral health support, and as we've talked to you multiple times about the Cartwheel Care Initiative we've done this year, which is one of our opportunities to expedite mental health services for our students and our schools. There's also a critical need at this point for English language acquisition support. We shared with you in the last meeting our top 10 budget drivers, but I just want to, you know, really drive this home for members of our community. We are in a period of declining revenues from state and other non-assessment sources. We are at the end of some of our pandemic relief funding that we've received, and so we're having to make decisions about what to continue or discontinue from those programs, and that's had about a million-dollar impact to the district. We have historic inflationary pressures on a lot of aspects of our budget, including utilities, supplies, and materials. We've had an 8% increase in health insurance rates. The state approved a rate increase of up to 14% for private special education schools and special education transportation services. We see continued disproportionate assessment increases to Minuteman High School, not only due to its budget, but also the enrollment increases from the town of Acton that they've seen. We have continued need for increased funding of critical infrastructure improvements across the district, and we've spoken about that. We've talked about the potential impact of labor negotiations, and we'll be talking about that more tonight. We are in a period of declining reserves, which means we have to be careful about how we're using excess and deficiency funds. And then we have limited ability of one of our communities, which is Acton, to increase its revenue because they are up against the levy limit and so can't really take on any increases above that 3% threshold. So we've had really a top 10 list of things that have made this an extraordinarily challenging budget process for us this year. Just looking at the two-year history, the yellow bars show the actual budgets that we've approved or are currently presenting. The red top of that actually represents what we would need to have been providing level services for our students, and so this red segment shows what the reduction has been over that period of time. Overall, our approach to closing the budget gap has been to look at any opportunities for additional revenue sources or non-personnel areas of the budget that we could see savings. We wanted to preserve our funding for our critical infrastructure needs as we outline them in the capital improvement plan, as well as some of the other projects that we've identified that are critical. We wanted to maintain at least the all-day kindergarten tuition at the current level of $1,800. We planned for the impact of contract negotiations and other obligations on the district. And then when we did have to make reductions, as opposed to reducations, as I'm seeing it now, those are actually reductions, we wanted to minimize the impact on students and school-based staff to the greatest extent possible. So some things we did, we looked at a smaller district office leadership, and that will have an impact on how we provide services across the district level next year. We knew that we could not further reduce non-certified staff because we had reduced those in the previous budget cycle, and the staff we have are actually critical to operating our schools. And what that meant is we had to look at other areas of administration as well as our certified staff in this budget cycle. Last year's budget appropriation was just shy of $103 million. We knew that the estimated cost of services within the operating budget, just to go up this year alone, would have been $177.3 million. We knew we had money coming off of grants that we needed to fund. That was $1.3 million. We also were able to revise some of our revenue estimates and save a couple of hundred thousand dollars there. We made some non-personnel adjustments and budget reductions to the tune of about $1 million, but that still left us with almost $2 million in staff reductions, and we achieved that through a combination of both attrition and having to reduce current staff. And that is how we arrived at our recommended budget of $105.8 million approximately. Just to recap some of the personnel changes, we are proposing the addition of two positions and reductions of 17.4. Those are almost all, if not all, certified educators or leaders. So the net reduction this year is 15.4 FTE. The addition includes two English language educators, and those are absolutely necessary to meet service delivery requirements for our multilingual learners. I shared with you previously that we just went through a program review for our multilingual education program, and they did cite us for not having enough staff to provide the required number of minutes of service that our students need. So in addition to this being the right thing to do, it's also required that we add these two positions. In terms of reductions, we were able to identify 9.2 positions that we could reduce through attrition, so staff members who were either leaving us or had left us, and an additional 8.2 positions that we needed to reduce. 6.2 of those were district-wide administration and leadership. Two were at the elementary level, 3.6 were at the junior high school, and 5.6 were at the high school. I will note that one of the reasons you see different impact by level is we looked very carefully at class sizes at every level and looked at the school committee guidelines that you had been working on all year and passed recently for class sizes, and that's why you see the different reductions at each level. We were really looking at class sizes in order to have equitable outcomes in terms of what our students received. So just to recap, there is a continued increase in volume and complexity of student needs for post-pandemic learning, our multilingual students and our students with IEPs. We have a two-year net reduction of 36 positions in the district. We reduced 20.6 FTE last year. I will note those were mostly non-certified, and then an additional 15.4 FTE this year, which were mostly certified educators. So overall, the dollar values for the two years were roughly the same, but the impact in FTE was different because we were talking about certified or non-certified educators. I do have to say that, you know, with the reductions we've had over the last two years, if we continue to see that challenge, it's going to certainly be putting a strain on, you know, how we're able to continue to provide the services that I think our students and families have come to expect, and the quality programming that our community certainly expects of the district. So we're certainly cognizant of that and thinking about kind of what that means for the future of the budget. So we're happy to open this up, I think, here at your discretion for public comment.
I welcome any comments at this time on the budget. Anybody in the audience? Not even Mr. Peterson.
I'm saving myself for public comments.
So then we get to talk about this afterwards, after we close up the hearing part. Yes? Okay, very good. So then, if there are no comments from the public, is there a motion to adjourn the annual budget hearing?
Seconded.
Okay, Ben got that second. I'm going to give it to Ginny. Ginny gave, Ginny moved, I know. Ginny moved, Ben seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Then we are closed.
We're going to, before you discuss, we'd like to present two slides to you, so I'm going to actually turn it over to Dave, let him present, and then I will come back to my seat.
Dave, you're steering this, just puts the arrow.
Yep. So there are two, there are two quick slides to summarize about where we stand relative to the governor's initial budget. I think you know by now the governor's first look is not the final answer. That happens typically sometime in a month that starts with J. I just wanted to show you that comparing '23 to '24, so '24, when I say preliminary, it's preliminary in two senses. One, it's the governor's first look, which is subject to change when the legislature deliberates over the budget, but also the data that was sent to Desi with the October 1 report was incorrectly submitted, and so that's going to need to be changed. I talked with Desi this week. They actually said it's a fairly common mistake, and it stems from the fact that in the October 1 report, tuitioned students who attend full-time are not considered full-time students for the foundation budget purposes. The foundation budget determines the state's share of what needs to be funded for education, and the state says if you're collecting tuition for half of their education, we're only going to pay for the other half. And so those students were incorrectly labeled as full-time students. It raised the foundation budget by quite a bit. The current speaker was very optimistic about the financial prospects of the district, but unfortunately, we had to make that known to Desi, and so that needs to be corrected. So what I have here, the blue numbers are my estimates as to what the final numbers will be, and I'm led to believe that it's going to be even a little bit less than this because I think we took, compounding our first mistake, we took an enrollment date that was too current and not October 1. So more to come on this, but just to run through where, about where we stand right now, the foundation budget is number of students times the rate. The rate is increased for inflation and the Student Opportunity Act. This is year three of six of implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. As a result, foundation budget is up $3.3 million. That's defined as the minimum required to provide an adequate education. Anybody sitting here knows that AB provides much more than that when we pass our budget. Subtracted from that is what's statutorily calculated as the required contributions. In this case, because it's a region, both communities are added together. You can see the difference between the two years, and as a result, the required contribution of Acton and Boxboro together was up $2.1 million. Foundation aid is very simple. What's your foundation budget, less the required contribution? That result was $1.2 million. But as you see at the bottom, the district is not going to get a $1.2 million increase in Chapter 70 in FY '24. We're going to get $30 minimum aid per student times about 5,000 students are about $150,000. We would have been eligible for $1.2 million if we were what's called a foundation district, and all a foundation district is, is one that is not a hold harmless district. We've talked about this before, but I'll just quickly show you some trend information. I won't go through line by line. You can see, I put three years up here. You can see all the various categories and the trends, all the way down to foundation aid and chapter 70 aid near the bottom. You can see that foundation aid, '23 to '24, is the amount from the previous slide. It's up $1.2 million. From '22 to '23, foundation aid was up $1.7 million, but our chapter 70 aid was only up $150,000 in FY '23 for minimum aid, and it's up $300,000 in FY '24 because even though the minimum aid increases $30 a student or $150, what was not built into the budget was the $60 a student we're actually receiving in FY '23 because we were told that's not necessarily going to be part of the base in the governor's first budget presentation that was built into the base. So we get to pick up the change in FY '23 plus the new $30 a student. So we're effectively budgeting for a $60, we will get next year $60 a student more on a budgetary basis. If you take the foundation aid or what the formula says you should be getting in aid and compare it to what we're actually getting, you can see that we're actually getting more, and that's because of this concept called hold harmless, which briefly is that no district can receive less than it did the year before. And included with the SOA several years ago was a statutory requirement that each district get at a minimum $30 a student in chapter 78. That trend is the cause for optimism because we were at $4.2 million. I didn't do these calculations two years ago. At $4.2 million underwater, meaning the foundation formula said we were entitled to $11 million, but we actually got $15 million, it seemed like it was going to take a long time before we got to the point where we would actually get foundation aid, where we'd actually benefit from the Student Opportunity Act. What's happened in the last two years has been, in one word, inflation, because inflation drives the second row number up there. Foundation budget per student, that number's multiplied by the number of students, and inflation has been in the last two years both at the statutory maximum of 4.5%. So that has driven a substantial increase in the foundation budget. It's somewhat related to the requirement contribution, but I'm not getting into the details of that now. You can see that the required contribution increase was a lot less than the foundation budget increase, and because of the interplay of those two, the foundation aid line going across is up a lot more from year to year than the chapter 70 aid is, and the line at the bottom is simply the difference between those two, and the difference is going down and down and potentially could continue in the next couple of years. There will be after FY '24, three more years of SOA and opportunity to benefit from more increases in the foundation budget per pupil. Those are the rates embedded in the foundation budget formula, and it's possible, I would say based on this, the data that you see, it could be likely that the district is looking at some real chapter 78 increases by, let's say, FY '26. I'll have more on this. I'm working on a memo. It wasn't ready. It wasn't ready for primetime because of the lack of time I've had, the mistake that needs to be corrected, et cetera. And when I do present it to you, I'll say the caveat before you even see the numbers. There are so many things that impact foundation aid. Chapter 78 is easy. You want to know what we're going to get for chapter 78 for the next three years? Take about 5,000 kids and multiply by 30 bucks. We're going to get about $150,000 a year unless foundation aid breaks through. That's going to be the key question going forward by the person who sits here and all of you to understand that there could be an opportunity going forward. So that's, I'm not sure if I can say the word brief, but a quick update as to some involved numbers that were embedded in the governor's release last week.
FY '26, huh? We going to be on record on that? You said FY '26? That's what you said.
And if it doesn't happen, you should consider appropriate discipline for me because I will have deserved it, yes.
Questions for Dave? Or about anything that we've seen? Hi, Yeben.
Just out of curiosity, the required contribution, how does that come, that number comes out?
Required contribution?
Yeah.
How does it get determined?
Yeah.
It's determined based on a combination of a community's wealth, half property wealth, the assessed value of property within the community, and half income wealth, the amount put on state income tax returns and submitted to the state compared with every other community in the state. That's the easiest answer to tell you right now how it gets determined generally, but from year to year for Acton and Boxboro specifically, it's typically, it's kind of a reverse of the hold harmless concept. The way it works is essentially, what was Acton's contribution last year? What was its revenue growth internally in the preceding year? And apply that percentage increase to last year's contribution, and that's your next year's contribution. That's very, very simply put, how those get determined.
I just have a quick one. So if our enrollment goes up, then we're able to get out of hold harmless more quickly. That's, get out of hold harmless quickly.
Out of character, but a one-word answer, yes.
So if, say, we added a couple hundred kindergarteners who are at full-time tuition, non-tuition, that could help expedite the process, but maybe not bring it in by a year, maybe make it a little faster.
Right, and that will be covered in the memo, and the teaser on that is the caveat that in order to do that, so if you look up there and see 5,024 enrollment that drives next year's chapter 70, that was October 1, 2022 enrollment. You would have to have no tuition. In other words, the all-day K students would have to be free for an entire year before the state aid would kick in for them.
You know, Dave actually has already started looking at potential impact on all-day K for this. One of the reasons why we don't think it's appropriate to talk about for the FY '24 budget is the only numbers we're working on are actually the governor's release of the budget, but there's a long budget process. It still has to evolve between now and the time the budget's finally passed, and we don't want to start making quick decisions based on preliminary numbers. But I think, you know, our intention would be to actually come back as we know more about what the final state budget looks like and continue that kindergarten discussion at that point because it could be a situation that, you know, you get into next year and then you can start to make some decisions around, geez, we actually now see the impact of this. There's going to be a point in time where it's the right moment to either stop charging kindergarten tuition or refund kindergarten tuition so that we can backdate it to the right point. And if we do that at the right time, the following year, it'll cost money one year, potentially out of E and D, to be able to refund kindergarten tuition, but the following year, there's an opportunity to now all of a sudden get a very significant boost in chapter 70 money. And so, you know, we just need to make sure we're sure of those numbers before we start playing around with what we're budgeting for. So it's coming, but we're not there yet.
That's exactly where I was going, is that at some point, we're going to be at a tipping point where we're going to have to pay a little money forward for a year to then be able to recoup that very quickly the next.
I just want to put into the Cliff Notes, though. There's a one-year runway. That's what I just heard, right? We either have to do some backdating or we need to make a one-year runway. So nobody, don't add us with, you know, we can just get rid of this right now. There needs to be a one-year runway. That's what you just said, right?
Suppose the tipping point, I came to you and said, the tipping point's in FY '24. We need to give everybody's money back that have paid in for this year because the students, in order to increase that top number and make the half-day kindergarten tuition-paying kids full day in the eyes of the state, it would need to have happened at October 1. We'd have to refund all their tuition, call them full-day kids as of October 1, and we'd have lost that revenue for this year. We'd have had to fund the costs essentially retroactively this year, but we're not at that tipping point yet.
I'm going back a slide, I think, one slide.
I'm going back a slide, I think, one slide. So, what was the corrected enrollment? How many tuitioned students are we talking about?
About 260.
Can you just explain what that population is? Because that sounds really high to me.
So, the kindergarten has roughly about 300 students. Some of them are pure half-day philosophically. The parents are comfortable with them attending half-day. Some of them attend full day by virtue of IEP in the eyes of the state for this. That's a full-time student. Some of them attend on financial waivers. We don't collect any tuition in the eyes of the state. That's a full-time student. The bulk of them, the bulk of the all-day attending students are tuition-paying. They're half-time in the eyes of the state. So, roughly speaking, if we were to retroactively do that, those 260, and again, I'm dealing with numbers that may not be exact because we're in flux as far as what the right numbers on the report should have been, we'd add 130 to that top number. What's 130? Well, there's 260 kids in there. At half-time, you flip them to full-time, and that's the half of 260.
So, it's just a discrepancy of how the kindergartners were reported that caused this?
Yes.
Okay. Did something change in terms of reporting to the state?
Yes. We have somebody new doing it. Yeah. I mean, that's what it is. And a common innocent mistake looks at something that's labeled as KF. What's KF? Kindergarten full-time? Well, these kids go full-time. I'm not going to put them in there. No. If they're tuitioned for this purpose, they're not full-time. They're half-time.
All right, friends, here we go. Public participation. So, per school committee policy, B-E-D-H, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the agenda. For items on the agenda, the public is asked to please wait for that item. Speakers must be recognized by the chair before speaking. The committee does not typically respond to comments during public participation. Good sir Peterson, hello.
I'm glad you recognize me. 25 years ago, the National Science Foundation awarded Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education funds to enable the creation of STEM-oriented parent organizations. Karen Herther, Janice Ward, and others worked together to create ABPip, the Acton-Boxborough Parent Involvement Project. Under the umbrella of ABPip, families, including thousands of students, participated in market math, star parties, game nights, nature activities, robotics, and at the high school, Discover STEM Fest. Our parent volunteers enjoyed sharing their STEM experiences, and our student volunteers were recognized for their volunteer hours and over the past decade with ABPip scholarships. Like so many community activities, COVID was very challenging for ABPip. As we exited COVID lockdown, Karen Pierce and Dawn Peterson, the current co-chairs, began the process of rebuilding the organization and revitalizing its mission. In support of their work, this afternoon, I met with Joni Dean and Deb Bookus to discuss the interest of the school district in participating in a process to reimagine ABPip. Joni and Deb were excited about the prospect of drawing on the deep community expertise and enthusiasm for STEM activities. They are supportive of forming a working group of educators and parents to work to create a new vision for PIP. Tonight, I ask community members with interest in STEM and a desire to build an organization to send their contact info by email to actnpip@gmail.com. That's actnpip@gmail.com with the subject line, ABPip Revisioning. The ABPip website, actnpip.org, is the place to go to follow the process and find details about our next event, the family skate in the Shoba Valley Olympia Ice Rink in Boxborough, which will be this Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Actnpip@gmail.com. Anybody else? All right, let's keep it moving. On to, oh, no, I'm sorry. Hi, Peter. You ready for superintendent's update?
I am.
All right.
All right. Hello, everyone. Although I've said hello three times. You know, one, I will just say, I rarely say I would speak on behalf of all of our educators, but I would say I do speak this time on behalf of all of our educators that having the week off last week was very, very well-deserved. And I think everyone got to a point where they needed a break. So, you know, we're certainly coming back from break now. And I really want to give a shout out to all of our staff, but in particular, our grounds crews and our custodial staff for Tuesday's efforts. They made sure that our schools were ready to open. Our staff drove in from, you know, whatever places there were so that we could continue to be consistent for our kids in the district. I know that provided a challenge for a lot of our staff because they live in other districts. And if you looked at the state, most places were either closed or had significant delays. We, you know, just felt like we could get the full day of school. And we know that coming off of a break in all of the last two years, it's incredibly important for our kids to get some consistency and routine. And so, you know, I made that decision to keep schools open. Just want to thank the staff for all of the efforts to get in. I know that that can be really challenging. I want to congratulate one of our students, Adve Gol, who was just recently selected as one of America's top 300 teen scientists. So, John, this goes right into the Acton PIP comment for achievements in STEM innovation and leadership in the nation's oldest and most prestigious high school competition, which is the Society for Sciences, and I had it written right here, Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholar Competition. This is a major competition. So, Adve was one of 300 students recognized nationally from an original applicant pool of almost 2,000 students across 620 high schools in the U.S. and international schools in China, as well as one of the top scholars. His paper that he wrote for, he worked, I actually had an opportunity to go to the high school yesterday and see the presentation. It was, maybe two days ago at this point, but it was absolutely amazing what he did. His paper was entitled, "The Geometry and Limits of Young Partition Flow Polotopes." And so, I only understood about four of the words in that, but he did. And it was really impressive, the presentation that he gave around that. I've actually already reached out to him and asked if he would be interested in coming giving the 15-minute overview of that to school committee as we go through the end of the year. Because I think it would be fascinating for you to be able to hear some of the work that our kids are engaging in and really thinking deeply about mathematics. Very, very impressive. He deserves a lot of credit. Dave Baumrider, our high school science department head, had mentored him through that process, and just a lot of support from our faculty at the high school. So, certainly congratulations to Adve. We're very, very proud. I also want to mention that tomorrow, Kira and I are going together into Newton to attend a legislative breakfast with a series of superintendents that is probably about a quarter of the Commonwealth, along with the legislative delegation from all of those communities. The purpose of that was the Superintendent's Association creating an opportunity to come together regionally and advocate for funding. I think a lot of our comparable schools are in similar budget positions as we are this year. And so, this was an initiative we took. So, we know a number of our state delegation will be there with us tomorrow and will be talking about ways that they can advocate at the state level to increase funding to local communities. Yeah, that should be a great opportunity. And then my last update, I, you know, I have extended opportunities to school committee candidates over the last several weeks where I've seen candidates coming to meetings. But if there are any candidates in Acton or Boxborough who are running for election and have decided they want to take the plunge or are thinking about taking the plunge, I'm happy to meet with anyone just to answer any questions candidates have about the school district. You know, I always say, you know, my role is certainly not to get involved in elections because my job is to work for the winner. But certainly, if candidates want to learn more about the district and just ask questions about what we do and are thinking about why we're doing what we do now, I'm always happy to meet with people. So, if there are any candidates out there, I know there is a number in the audience tonight, please feel free to reach out. You can email me directly, and we will get a time set up in the next week or so. So, thank you very much, and we can continue.
And Godspeed for all of y'all who are trying out here. All right. So, I think you're actually still up. So, we are moving on to new business and the recommendation to appoint Melissa Andrew as district treasurer.
Great. And Dave, I am wondering if you would like to introduce Melissa a little bit?
So, in keeping with the trend, Margaret Tenney is looking forward to retiring. And she has, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to fill in the blank. She has worked as treasurer for the district for?
Seven years.
Seven years. So, you came on a year before I did. I've had the pleasure of working with you for, into the sixth year. Margaret is extremely bright and on financial matters, impeccably honest as far as understanding internal controls over cash, what the compliance aspects of taking out debt. Her work with the health insurance trust has always been one of, it's like it's her money when she makes a vote, dealing with the health insurance trust. I'm going to miss her. I'm going to try personally to play as much golf as she does in the future. She'll be transitioning from roughly one-day-a-week position to a totally free agent. And it's well-deserved. I can speak for the entire team, including the person sitting to Margaret's left, that everybody's going to miss you. The days that you come in are joyous. And, oh, Margaret's in today. And you love to bring us delicious concoctions that, oh, no, that's not you. So, personally, thank you. If I'm allowed this on behalf of the district for your service, we appreciate it. Margaret has the distinction of overseeing what we now know to be one of the most favorable bond issuances in the history of Western civilization. How's that? And it wouldn't have happened without your guidance and knowledge and encouragement. So, I appreciate everything that you've done, Margaret, and wish you well. And so, that leaves an opening, a very big opening in the department for somebody to work, oh, one day a week or so as the official district treasurer. Something you may not know is the district has two positions in the treasury function. A treasurer per se, who was appointed by the school committee, that will have been Margaret for seven years come June 30. So, we need somebody to take on that role. And the person I'm recommending is Melissa Andrew. Melissa, you're going to get the same question asked of you. Melissa has worked for the district for?
Six years. Oh, for the district.
Yeah, 18 years. You have the resume, which, I'm sorry, I didn't put in front of me. And you can read the various aspects of her career at AB and beforehand. Melissa has been a full-time employee as assistant treasurer. And I don't think Margaret would be offended by me saying this, but Melissa does the heavy lifting, the day-to-day work, the cash transfers, the bank reconciliations, the deposits of funds received by the district, interacting with the rest of the staff as needed. She's a key member of our weekly Accounts Payable group that meets to discuss efficiencies and improving procedures. And frankly, I enjoy whenever she's there because she brings an objectivity to things. She doesn't do the accounts payable processing or the payroll processing or the account analysis, but she sees enough of what her colleagues do to be able to always interject something that's meaningful and oftentimes creative and always valued. And so, Melissa, almost completely following the trend, is also looking to scale back from working full-time to when Margaret was of the opinion that she wanted to step away completely. Melissa was interested in picking up the full-time, the full treasurer's job, which is a part-time position. And given that they have worked together for as long as Margaret has been treasurer, they have been anticipating that this would not be a controversial personnel move. They've been discussing transition. And it's, I know because it's Melissa's nature to be apprehensive about something new, but she will be great because she has the same character traits as far as this is the right way to do it, this is the way we will do it. Melissa has, in addition to the other things that I mentioned, she is the point person for all of our insurance programs, not health insurance, but property casualty insurance, dealing with bus accidents, putting in front of me opportunities and suggestions from our insurer to enhance our district's coverage and reduce our district's risks. And that will need to be transitioned to someone else if you're of the opinion that she should, as I'm recommending, be made the district's treasurer on July 1st.
Yeah. And so, you know, we are so pleased to be able to recommend Melissa Andrew be appointed as the district's treasurer effective July 1, 2023. And so, we'd seek, you know, your approval for that.
So, that was a pretty extraordinary introduction. Would you like to say anything about yourself that we may hear your voice? Please join us at the microphone.
Melissa's public speaking is on a par with Margaret's cooking, and they just neither them like either, but that's okay.
I think being treasurer is, while it's certainly an honor, the main reason I really want to be treasurer because I'm retiring is to help the next person take on those day-to-day responsibilities of treasury so that it'll be a smooth transition to the next. You know, so we aren't, no one's left hanging. But I guess that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
Any question?
Hi, Adam.
I have a procedural question first, which is typically, we vote the treasurer when we reorganize the school committee, when we vote the secretary as well. Are we being asked to do that in advance of our reorganization tonight?
I think we are hoping to be able to line things up so we can actually post the assistant treasurer position. And so, that's why we would like to preferably do this tonight.
I think it's great. I think we should just, maybe to cover our bases, do it tonight and do it again when we reorganize if we need to.
Welcome.
Excellent. And then, I would also just like to extend my gratitude to Margaret for the amazing work that you've done for the past six years. We have said your name at least once a year when we voted you, and admittedly, haven't gotten to see you. So, it's great to have you here and to, again, say thank you. I'll echo, you know, Dave's comments, the work that you were able to do on our ability to finance the new school building in the way that we did, which was absolutely amazing. And I know that members of our two towns' finance committees sing your praises all the time for that. So, thank you so much for that. Melissa, while you have big shoes to fill, I know you've, this is a nice, you've got big feet, but we welcome you and are excited to have you join as a treasurer.
Thank you.
I think I may be one of the only school committee members that has actually gotten to sit in on meetings with Margaret. She is a fascinating OPEB contributor. So, in the hours I got to spend learning about OPEB, which I'm sure all of you should definitely hope to get to do in your school committee tenure, she, just as Dave did, she made it very understandable. So, Melissa, I hope that you are just a good- So Melissa, I hope that you are just as good understanding of making OPEB fascinating in those meetings. But thank you for your service, and I'm sure, Melissa, you'll do a wonderful job.
I'd like to move to appoint Melissa Andrews as the district treasurer for Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee, district, sorry. Effective July 1st.
Excuse me, Amy, Andrew, no S, just FYI.
Melissa Andrews, right? Oh, Andrew, my apologies.
It happens all the time.
Okay, so that was Amy who moved and Tessa who seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with gratitude for both of you and your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, everybody, we are ready for a negotiations update. That's coming from Amy and Marie. Thank you so much, y'all. Good evening, Marie.
Thank you, Kira. Very excited to be here this evening to present the tentative agreement and memorandum of agreement between the Acton-Boxborough Education Association and the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee. It was ratified by the Acton-Boxborough Education Association just a little while ago. So we're moving it forward to the school committee. And I have a little bit of a summary here. The actual memo of agreement is being passed out and will be posted on the website. So in terms of process, the school committee negotiations subcommittee, Amy was, Amy Krishnamurthy was the chair of the subcommittee, including Kira Cook and Liz Folks. And the administrative support to the subcommittee was myself, Peter Light and Andrew Shen. And the negotiations committee for the teachers included 19 teachers from all over the district, representing all different kinds of roles. It was a very collaborative process, and we're very grateful for the relationship that we have with our teachers' union, that we're able to sit and talk and solve problems and make things work for kids and for staff. We started our work last spring in sort of the proposal development, forming the committee, thinking about priorities, et cetera. We started meeting early in the school year and met throughout the school year and came to an agreement a couple of weeks ago. A little bit about how this works, there were several school committee executive sessions of the full school committee. Those included the town manager. The town manager has a vote with the school committee in the contract. And because we're a regional district, the way that that works is there's a process by which both town manager, the town manager of Acton and the town administrator from Boxborough come together with the superintendent, have a conversation, and decide who to move forward as the representative to the two towns. So if we were a single-town district, the town manager for that town would be part of the school committee as part of this process. And because we're a region, when this was done in the fall or late summer, it was decided that John Manjirati, the town manager from the town of Acton, would represent the towns in this process with the school committee. So Mr. Manjirati's been at the executive sessions with the school committee and has a vote, and he will join the committee in voting this evening. The committee met in executive session prior to this meeting to review the final contract and take a vote prior to voting in the public session. So I'm going to go over some contract language changes, sort of in the context of negotiations. You're all listening to the news and seeing what's happening out there. You know that we've had a difficult budget season and the funding is limited. And yet inflation's very high, and everybody's working very hard and coming off of COVID. It was sort of a situation where we did not have a lot to offer financially. And again, we appreciate the collaboration of our teachers to work with us. So most of what you're going to see here is sort of some language changes that really weren't around money. So the first section has to do with schedules and preparation periods at the elementary school. This was important to teachers. It was important to administration to get this right. And we had a joint subcommittee that met and did some nice work to come up with some compromises. So for our elementary school educators, the current contract gives them four preparation periods a week, so roughly 40 to 45 minutes a day for four out of the five school days. We worked through a process where they're going to get the equivalent of a fifth prep. And with that, they're going to, they've agreed that there can be 10 MTSS data meetings during the school day during the year. So across the course of the year, 10 of, say, 37 weeks of school, there will be data meetings. And some of the additional prep will come from additional rotations of art, music, and PE. Some of them might come from a little bit of the professional learning time on Wednesdays. There are some other pieces. Special educators will be given a 30-minute block per week to be used for the student evaluation process. That's in addition to prep periods. Case load educators, when we talk about caseload educators, we're talking about special educators, counselors, psychologists, speech and language, OT, PT. And some of those educators invariably miss their prep periods or lunch or recess because of scheduled consultations with teachers, consultations with parents, team meetings, those kinds of things. So there's some language in there to really try to mitigate that through rescheduling. And if that can't be done, there will be some compensation, which I'll talk about in a couple of minutes, for regularly losing those kinds of times. Another thing we agreed to is that elementary librarians, art, music, and phys ed teachers will teach a maximum of 24 classes per week. That's pretty consistent with what happens in other departments and is really the maximum that they can teach and still get their preps and their music and their lunch, I mean, lunch and recess. There's a little bit of language about all teachers will attend back-to-school night and one other night at the principal's discretion. That was happening at many grade levels, but not at all grade levels. The one somewhat significant change is around parental leave. In our current contract, parents, birth parents and adoptive parents may use their sick time to pay for leave of absence of up to eight weeks when they have a baby. The non-birth parent has not had that. The non-birth parent has had two weeks. So just to back up a little bit, any new parent can take up to 12 weeks under the Family Medical Leave Act. The question is what's paid and what's not paid. And so in our current contract, birth parents and adoptive parents can be paid for up to eight weeks, but they use their own accumulated sick days. In the, each year you work for us, you get 12 sick days, and any unused sick days can roll forward. So it takes quite a while to accumulate eight weeks of sick days. The request on the part of the teachers was that we have parity for all parents, and we have agreed to up to eight weeks of using your own accumulated sick days for the birth of a baby, whether you're the birth parent or not the birth parent. So that's getting closer to sort of what's happening in Massachusetts with the Massachusetts Paid Family Leave that companies can invest in and employees that work in corporations might invest in. So we're estimating that the incremental cost of that is roughly $30,000 to $40,000 a year above what we're currently paying, although some of that will be offset if some of those days are actually unpaid. There are a few other little things. There's a clarification on stipends for moving classrooms. There are some club and activities that were outlined and updated what the stipends will be. And then the last bullet on this one, teachers who substitute during their prep period or miss lunch recess to sub or attend a meeting will be paid $35 per class. This is something we started at the junior high a couple of years ago as a pilot. We started at the high school this year. Basically, substitutes are one of our most difficult category of employees to keep in this economy where unemployment's very low and people have lots of options for where they can work. Substitute teaching is hard to keep full. So what this has allowed us to do is if a teacher has a prep period and they would like to volunteer to cover for another teacher who's not there, then they sub for that teacher and we give them $35. And that has really helped a lot at the junior high and high school this year, and it's helped keep kids in classes instead of having free periods at the high school, which was what was happening previously in many cases. And we have a quality certified teacher teaching the class. If it's a longer-term coverage, there is a higher rate of pay. It's about $68 a class, maybe 70, and that was already in the contract. If you teach an extra class for an extended period of time, you're paid at a rate, it's one, it's a complicated formula, but it's tied to the teacher's contract and it's roughly $70 a day. And that would include grading and correcting papers and that kind of thing. All right, so now I'm going to move on to sort of the finances. So the parental leave is going to cost between $30,000 and $40,000 a year. There are some stipends for the elementary school instructional leadership teams or the ILTs. That's going to cost $15,000 to $20,000. The substituting thing, we don't have a number for because it's still pretty new. But when we hire a day sub, we pay them $100 a day. When we hire a longer-term sub, three weeks or so, we pay them 150 a day. So at $35 a period for five periods, it's about $175 a day. So it's incremental, but it's something we believe we have to do. And then there's the cost of living. So before I get into the cost of living, I want to just sort of remind everyone this is our salary schedule. We have a 12-step schedule. And then there are columns or lanes, they're called, based on your degrees and your graduate credits. So we have the bachelor's, bachelor's plus 15, masters. All teachers must have a master's within five years of becoming certified. And then postmasters, graduate credits, we move up the salary scale $2,000 or $3,000 each for every 15 credits past your master's, up to master's plus 60 or a doctorate. So that's a pretty typical salary schedule. We have 12 steps. Some districts have 9, 10, 11, 12. Most that I've seen have between 13 and 18, and we have 12. But we have this thing called supermax. So in, when you start with us, your highest step you can start at is 12, no matter how many years you've taught. But after 12 years of teaching experience here, you go into supermax. And so let's say I'm in the master's column, $88,686. The 13th year, I'm going to get a cost of living on that $88,000, which is what we call the base, plus $2,000 for supermax. The next year, so we'll call that $90,000 plus the cost of living. The next year, I get $2,000 more dollars, so it's cumulative. So it allows our teachers, after the 12th year, to go up faster than the cost of living up through what I'll call step 17, which is what many of our competitors have, 15, 16, 17 steps. And then after that, you get cost of living plus $1,000 for every year that you're with us. So that's how our salary schedule works. The last contract we settled three years ago for FY '21, we had a 1.5% cost of living. For FY '22, we had a 2.5%, and for this year, we had a 2.5% for a total of 6.5% over three years. This graph is based on last year's salaries. So the black line is Acton-Boxborough. There are several towns there. You can see most districts are very close at the beginning. And then when they get to their top step, and you can see it can be between years 12 and 18, at that point, it goes flat. These do not add in cost of living. This is future earnings without cost of living. In Acton-Boxborough, down at the bottom, we're right in the middle, maybe a little below average. And then around year 10, 11, 12, we're still, we're quite low, but then we jump up pretty quickly and then we keep going after years 15, 16, 17. So our teachers who are here 25 years or more are now catching up and getting closer to the annual salary of the higher-paid districts. But you can see the gap of the years in between. So it's a little complicated, but I wanted to give you sort of a picture of how this works. And so now the contract that is being brought forward to you, the cost of living for FY '24 is 1.75%. FY '25 is 2.75, and FY '26 is 2.75. Now, those are the cost of living. You add into that the steps, the lanes, and the supermax. And in our contract, that can be up to about 2.5% across all employees. The, about 60% of our employees are in supermax or above step 12. So 40% are on steps, 60% are above the steps in supermax. Those who are five years into supermax get $1,000 more than those numbers. So that can be roughly 1% of their salary. So this is, again, in the context that I started with of the economy coming off of COVID inflation, et cetera. You've heard about the districts that are really struggling with their contract negotiations. So our three-year total is 7.25%. And this next chart shows you what other districts have settled for. The left two columns are people who settled a year ago. So their contracts are FY '23, '24, and '25. And then the right-hand two columns are people who have settled in the last few months for next year. And so you can see with inflation and everything going on, some districts are quite a bit higher. So again, we really appreciate the cooperation and collaboration. We feel good about the 7.25. We know that's in the context of Acton being at the levy limit and the limits we have on how much our budget can go up. So FY '25 and FY '26 are going to be, you know, a push to get the budgets settled. All right, yep.
No, I just want to make a comment because I think as we look at this slide, I just, you know, will say, our education- I, I just, you know, will say our educators are keenly aware of what all these other districts are settling at. There's a lot of communication between and among districts and unions about where negotiations go. And I will say, you know, obviously, there's inflationary pressure that drives, you know, the current settlement, but our educators also came in very aware and articulate about maintaining the services for kids and being sensitive to that. And so, you know, I think in this negotiation, at least from my perspective, everyone was really aware of the balance between maintaining competitive salaries and responding to inflation, but also doing it at a level that was sensitive to where we're at financially as a district. So that, it was certainly a difficult year to be negotiating that on a lot of fronts. So I would just give our educators credit for their approach as well.
So that was all that I have. So if you have questions or comments, and we'll ask for a vote when you're ready.
Questions or comments from the committee? Hi, Jenny.
I just want to say thank you to the subcommittee. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of meetings, and I know that, you know, we, we value our teachers and our staff just extremely always, but especially, you know, after everything they've been through and are still going through and responding to the students' needs. So thank you for this, and I think it's, you know, I think it's great, and I think there's a lot to be proud of here. So thank you to the subcommittee.
I, I just wanted to say that I really wanted to echo what Peter was saying. This is my third negotiation with the ABEA. It has, you know, we have a, I would say, a very unique relationship, and I really appreciate the, in a year where it could have been extremely difficult, just being able to be very collaborative and really trying to problem solve and, and do what's best for kids. So thank you very much for that.
Gary Kushner, Boxborough Finance Committee. I have a question on process. In the past few years, the finance committee in Boxborough has noticed that our Boxborough TA has not been part of this process. I missed what Marie said earlier. Was our TA invited to be a representative on the committee and they passed it on, or have we not been asked like we haven't been in the past?
Yeah, so the state law actually stipulates that when you enter teacher negotiations, if you're in a regional school district, you actually invite the, both executives to a meeting with the superintendent of schools at the start of that process. And then if there's more than one executive, between the two of them, they have to select one that will participate in negotiations. Ultimately, if that's selected, then if, ultimately, they chose John to participate, if there was ever a disagreement on who should do it, it's selected based on the weighted votes of the school committee as to who would participate. So, yes, we certainly went through that same process.
I just wanted to make sure that we were at least asked, because I wasn't comfortable that we were been in the past.
Yeah, yep, both, both town managers or town administrators were included in that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
So before we make this motion, I want to make sure that it's emphasized, that the, the budget that was presented at the last meeting and the, the hearing that we just had and the budget that we're going to present one more time at our next meeting includes the budget for this new contract, right? And so all of the things, we, we still delivered an assessment that is, that respects the levy limit, right? We've met fiduciary obligations to this community even with this contract, right, Marie? And can you, can you talk a little bit about, I mean, you've talked about what twenty-four, I mean, twenty-five and twenty-six will mean, but can you just, can we just talk a little bit more about what this holds and what it means that we've still met our budgetary obligations and also made this, settled this contract?
I think overall, what it means is at this point, you know, we don't have to make further reductions to staffing. We're crunching the numbers at this point, looking at some of the nuances of where money flows now that the coal is set. You know, I think once the school committee ratifies, we're going to be able to go back and do some final budget calculations. And it may mean that when we come to you next week, there's some small shift in some direction, but I don't anticipate anything significant, and it doesn't push the budget higher by any means. This is all within the budget.
Thank you.
Want to make a motion?
Go for it.
I move to approve the proposed Acton-Boxborough Education Association ABEA contract for the period from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as set forth in the memorandum of agreement between the bargaining committees for the ABEA and the school committee.
So that was Tessa and Amy May, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed or, yes, no opposed or abstentions, y'all?
Kira, hang on, the town manager also votes.
Apologies, hello, hi, hello, come on. Okay, he said aye, so it's unanimously passed with gratitude. Thank you so much. Mr. Balleweski, do you have anything that you would like to say?
Sure, is this on? Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Marie said, that I think it's not lost on me as a union leader, that across the state, negotiations have been extremely contentious. And while I am, you know, energized and very proud of the, the union leaders across the state that are fighting for what teachers deserve, I also think we should all acknowledge that when teachers have to stand out on street corners, when teachers have to organize politically, it is because negotiations have failed. It is because they have not been respected at the bargaining table. And so I'm very grateful that we did not have to do that and that we were able at the bargaining table despite some gaps and some differences to work together collaboratively. So thank you.
Thank you, and your team, and our teachers. We're very grateful. Thank you, Marie. All right, we are moving on to our next item, which is the discussion of school committee temporary reorganization after Acton and Boxborough Town meetings. It's got my name next to it, but I didn't write the memo, so you're going to present your memo, yeah?
Yeah, I will. So, you know, a number of committee members have asked me about what, what does it mean if we have, you know, a significant number of seats turning over? And in particular, one of the unique elements this year is that, you know, before the end of the current school year, our chair and vice chair positions will be turning over for both towns. So there was, I know some concern on part of committee members about what that meant and what the committee might want to do. So I looked, you know, very carefully at policy and procedure that the committee exists, already has in place. I looked at a little bit of the history of the school committee policy and procedure in order to be able to make a recommendation. I think initially, some people were thinking there might need to be a temporary reorganization of the school committee to cover the chair and vice chair positions. But when you look carefully at the policy, and I, I went into more detail in the memo than I will tonight, but before the current school committee policy, which we wrote to have the chair take over effective August first, and I think for good reason, so that they could finish out a school year, finish the superintendent's evaluation, and then have a transition period over the summer to a new chair, because it was leading to some awkward moments in transition when the chair took over immediately. But before this current policy, we actually had a process in place where at the first full meeting of the school committee after both member towns, the newly elected members took over, that was the reorganization meeting of the school committee. And for those of you who have some history with it, it's, it was fairly awkward because one chair would start the meeting, we would then turn it over to the superintendent, I would facilitate a reorganization meeting, and then that chair no longer spoke, but this new person just literally took the gavel and ran the rest of the meeting. And it was odd, but...
It's really hard for the person taking over.
That's right. For the person taking over, you knew you had to hit the ground running, you know, from the, the second that you were elected as the chair. However, if we just look at that precedent, I actually think in this case, it provides a fairly easy transition model for the current school committee. We know based on the dates of the town elections, the Acton members' last date will be April thirteenth. There's one meeting after that on May fourth. However, the Boxborough members will still be present at that May fourth meeting. And so, you know, we have a vice chair from Boxborough who has been the chair of the school committee before. The easiest thing, in my opinion, is just to have that member chair the meeting on the fourth. And then when we get to, you know, the May eighteenth meeting, both school committees, the members from both towns will have been seated. However the committee wants to do it, you could either have someone start the meeting who is just remaining, or I could just start the meeting and go right into reorganization and do the reorg meeting and then the new chair takes over. And then the implication, though, is because you have a different policy now, you would just have to waive the current policy first before you then vote that reorganization, so that you can reorganize, have the new chair take over, and then, quite honestly, that chair then could remain the chair from the moment they take over, all the way through the following year. That's probably the smoothest method to this. If you wanted to complicate it, for fun, we, or for whatever other reasons, in all seriousness, you might have other reasons why you want to do it, you could go through some process of waiving the policy, electing temporary people for one or two meetings or for three meetings or whatever, and then, you know, reorganizing a second time. I, I think it's pretty drawn out for the one or two meeting impact that I think we're really talking about, but I wanted to put it all in a memo. It's ultimately not my decision, but I think of all of the challenging things that we're talking about right now, this, in my opinion, doesn't need to be one of them, but that would be my assessment of where we're at right now. And the recommendation, I think, for me, is just to follow that path of least resistance on this one.
So y'all want to be cool, or you want to tie knots? What we doing? Hi, Adam.
I'm, I'm going to stir the pot. And I'm throwing this out there, I think, you know, I think that the path of least resistance makes a lot of sense. However, we've heard feedback from this committee, and we recognize that this committee has a lot of people who are relatively new, who haven't necessarily held leadership positions. And, you know, I think we've been challenged in the past that those people with the longest tenure always seem to get these positions, and there's a unique opportunity here for someone who's interested in seeing what it's like to lead the committee, to raise their hand and say, hey, I'll take us to the end of the year to see what it's like. Just like last year, we postponed our reorganization until a little bit later in the year, we could equally do that again. We could let the new members get seated, get everybody to under, know each other, and, and then reorganize at our last or second to last meeting and have an opportunity for someone who's interested to see what it's like to run the meeting, to, to read the red text on the agenda, to, to, to see if they're actually interested in then taking the, literally, the gavel for the next year. Because I think, like, you know, like, like was shared in previous meetings, there, there are a lot of people who haven't necessarily felt that they've been given the opportunity to take that leadership role. So, you know, as someone who's sat in that chair, I'm, I'm more than happy to provide mentorship or guidance or a shoulder to cry on for someone who wants to try that for a couple of meetings before you take it on for a full year. I think it's an opportunity that people should consider.
I think that as someone who sat on the committee when we reorganized the other way that Peter was referring to, some of the background of what went into that is exactly what Peter said. It's, it requires someone who has experience to take over at that, at that meeting, if you're going to reorganize that way. Like, it would be so difficult for someone who's only been on the committee for a year or two to take over the leadership position and all of the things that go with it, because it's not just sitting at this meeting and reading the red text. It's meeting with Peter Weekly. It is meeting, if you're an Acton chair, it means meeting with the ALG. If you are a Boxborough chair, it means meeting with the BLF. It, it is, I don't, I don't want to make it sound like a scary position, but I agree with Adam that it's a lot to take on. And certainly there are pieces of it that when you get thrown into it, you just learn how to do them. I don't particularly like speaking in front of people, like, in an audience, and that's one of those things that you just have to get used to. But the behind the scenes work is where a lot of the, the stress and everything comes from. You have to manage ten other people and I, and a superintendent and other town officials. And, you know, I mean, I, not to minimize it, that's like a really big job on top of whatever is going on in the rest of your life. And so I think what Adam is saying is definitely true and something to be considered, given that Adam and Jenny will be the most senior members, right, when, when it turns over. And I just, I think that we are in a unique position, having so many new members, but we're also in the position of having had COVID and the lack of training that has happened over the last couple of years. And there is a lot to this job beyond this actual committee. You have, it's really important, I think, to engage with the MASC and the other committees and to know what's going on, you know, not only in your own town, but across the state legislatively. Like, that's a really important piece. And so I think that a lot of people don't really realize how much goes into this job to be an effective member, to attend the MASC trainings that are provided for school committee members, because this is so unlike anything else that you would do in real life. So I think Adam's suggestion is one that we should consider, it, for, for all of those reasons.
And Tessa, don't worry, I'm not offended by saying I'm difficult to manage. My, my mother, my wife, Marie, and Kira would probably tell you the same thing.
All right, so I am going to respectfully disagree, simply because, yes, it is absolutely overwhelming and you are thrown into the deep end of the ocean. I was one of those people that...
That's a really selfish.
I know. Yes, but I was also one of those people that stepped in. I did have the benefit of being the vice chair before becoming chair. So in this particular case, yeah, you don't have the backup. But I do think that it would make a lot of sense to, to just do the process on the eighteenth or on the, whenever the, the, whatever meeting that is, after the fourth. I think it was eighteenth. You know, because, and then, and then ask for mentorship. I'm still in town, I can talk, I can definitely be around. Tessa's gone. Adam, you're still on, you've, you've had this experience. So, I mean, I just think that, I think that you should not be afraid to step up into this kind of position. It is incredibly difficult sometimes, but it's also very rewarding. You get to hang out with Peter, you know. I didn't get to, but, you know, I've heard it's fun. I would, I would just say, I think that the idea of, of someone stepping in for two weeks and then you have a vote on who should be chair, and that person is like, well, I like it, I want to do it, and the other, I mean, it's such an, it would be such an awkward transition if, you know, I, I just think it'd be a really awkward transition. You could always decide later if the person that steps in who just goes, eh, yeah, not, not really interested, can we do, can we do something else? That's always an option. But I think starting is, would be a bit, I, I think the idea of starting on the eighteenth with a new team would be, you know, I think it's, I think it's doable.
Mr. Peterson, and then I've got my own.
I want to agree with Tessa. You left out one important group that needs to be managed, that would be the public. I didn't want that to be overlooked. And I think there was some discussion about running the meetings, and I think this really is sort of the tip of the iceberg. Everybody sees it, but I think that most of the people here actually would easily be able to run the meeting. I think the real work of the chair is the behind the scenes work, you know, helping to develop and articulate the strategy. So I hope that however you go about picking a chair, you'll look for somebody who really has the time to do the job, because that is clearly important, you know, and has that commitment to helping develop and articulate the district's strategy.
That's a perfect segue. So it's about the time, I, I think that that's really important, and then it's about, you know, the relationship building in the background. I, I think that anybody can sit in this chair. I don't want to discourage any of y'all from sitting in this chair. And I, I actually think... And I actually think, I am of the opinion that y'all should be cool and not tie, or I'd rather, I think you should tie knots, the way that Adam talked about. Try it out. Why not? You know, this big turnover is an opportunity. You represent the future of this committee. You have this beautiful opportunity to reestablish a relationship with our community in a way that we haven't had for three years. And so we've talked about COVID, we've talked about all of it, we've talked about controversies, we've talked about all of it. Here's a fresh new start with five new people, and maybe new leadership. And since the leadership sweep is leaving, and we didn't get that training in our vice chair seats, you get to do whatever you want. Like, you really honestly do. And I think that you should take advantage of that. I really honestly do. So if somebody would like to sit in this seat for two weeks and try on the outfit before you take it home, then do it. If you want to get some mentorship, Adam really is an awesome mentor. He really, really is. Take advantage of that. Go talk to folks in town, get to know your neighbors, for better and for worse. Sit in the chair, try on the outfit. Treat it like Stitch Fix. Send it back if you don't like it, on the 18th, or whenever, right? That's my opinion. You know, but y'all can do whatever you want. I would love to hear from one of these, one of y'all members, who is not at the end of your time on this committee, and y'all tell me what you want. Hi, Rebecca.
I think this discussion is really interesting, because it definitely echoes the last go-around of this with picking the chairs. And I remember voicing a concern that if we have a lot of senior people leaving, this was the year that was a great opportunity to mentor the people that were coming up. So it does feel a little bit frustrating to have lost that opportunity. I also think, you know, we're just going to have to make it work. So there is going to have to be, I guess at least from Boxborough, the chair will have to be a new person, or the vice chair will have to be a new person. I super am excited for mentorship opportunities and stepping up to help in any way that I can, but I'm interested to see who wants to be chair, and I'm looking across the aisle here at the slightly more senior people. But yeah, I think we'll make it work. I feel pretty positive about it, so.
Truthfully, I think the quick transition makes more sense for me. The process that Peter was talking through, I think it's a great opportunity to jump in, but I think it's a good opportunity to kind of coalesce as a full group a little bit. We'll know who's won, we'll know who's a part of this new committee, or this, yeah, the new school committee. And going into that, giving us a chance to kind of just go through it, rather than having the Stitch Fix, and I like the idea of Stitch Fix. I like the chaos of it, true. But I think that going towards just getting into the next mix and working through that way, it seems to make more sense to me. But also knowing that I will call anybody around anyway with questions.
There's something to be said about stability and doing a two-week stint. Whoever may choose to end up being that, you know, the chair for two weeks or four weeks, it doesn't cut it, especially in a time of transition. You need somebody with a steady hand on the till, and this is not the time to do it.
I just want to note that the real work of the chair happens throughout the summer and in the beginning of the school year. So the idea that there's a lot that goes on at the end of May is not true. It doesn't. You don't need a steady hand at the end of May. I think, it doesn't matter to me which way you vote, because I'm not going to be on the committee, but it's not true that you couldn't have, Adam can be a vice chair, or Adam can be a chair, and he would be a senior member. So Boxborough doesn't necessarily have to have a brand-new vice chair in terms of membership. But, you know, it's, there will have to be a collaboration regardless, because you're going to have to plan a summer session where you do training, or you plan for the year. And yeah, it's helpful to have someone in charge of that, but it's only helpful to have someone in charge of that when someone has more experience, or, you know, background knowledge, or whatever, you know, in terms of the direction. I think actually you have an opportunity to all collaborate on what your summer session might be about, because there isn't really anyone that is so senior unless, you know, you elect Adam or Ginny. But like, I just think that you have an opportunity either way for people to be involved that haven't been involved before, and what you're really talking about is two meetings. The reason that we moved that to the person taking over August 1st, or whatever, was so that there was collaboration. And I think that that's going to happen regardless, so I don't really think it matters if you pick someone, you know, for the 18th or not. But that's just my two cents.
So it's three meetings, which is about a month and a half. It's, as Tessa said, it's sort of the wrap-up of the year, so there's not a lot of significant lifting, other than working with the outgoing chair on developing the superintendent's evaluation. And what I would say is that we don't have to make the decision tonight. I think we throw it a couple, we throw out a couple of ideas. I think everyone should think about it, and we should put it on the agenda for a future meeting. This is, you know, the point of bringing this up, I think, now was to say, hey, we're looking down the road, we see something coming, let's talk about it. We had a really good deliberation about it tonight, which I appreciate, and let's bring it up at another meeting and see what the committee wants to do.
Good idea. Okay, so y'all are going to sit on it? Sleep on it? Think about tying knots. Okay, very good. We're moving on then? Awesome. Okay, I thought you almost turned on your mic. All right, here we go. The rest of ongoing business, subcommittee and member reports. Mr. Klein?
I wasn't at the last budget meeting, so I'll look back to the chair, who I think led that last budget meeting.
Mrs. Cook, that would be me. The subcommittee met on Monday to discuss the very robust and yet smooth budget discussion that we, budget presentations that we received two weeks ago. Subcommittee members talked about that process. We commended the administration for all of the hard work that, and long discussion that is actually, that started in September and resulted in that great presentation. And so we are now pivoting toward preparing for a town meeting, which is now my opportunity to make a plug for set your calendar, get your babysitting, put in a pool for babysitting sitters. I don't know how this works. Y'all, just please come to town meeting. Come to both town meetings. And this is also a reminder to all school committee members that it is your sworn duty as elected officials on this committee to show up at both town meetings. So pick your outfits and get your babysitters and show up. So that was the bulk of that, that subcommittee meeting. Did I miss anything? Very good. All right, next, capital subcommittee. Mr. Blumenthal.
Capital subcommittee met on February 13th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. to discuss ongoing business regarding the capital budget. During the meeting, was presented the, to the subcommittee was the hypothetical capital finance restructuring plan, if I got that correct, Mr. Verderlino. Whereby it included, from years FY '23 to FY '31, discussion took place about the additional borrowing to address ongoing capital needs. Further meetings will be scheduled in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kremer.
Don't call me that. The policy subcommittee met on the 14th of February, and we are in the process of wrapping up our discussions relative to the renting of facilities policy, which has been an ongoing discussion that's been complicated for various reasons. I think we're pretty close to bringing that back to this committee. And we're also starting work on the reporting to families of assessments, an issue that was raised by Amanda Bailey of our CPAC regarding, you know, how and when families are notified of assessments that occur with their children. And we're in the process of learning more about how that happens. Both Amanda and I believe Deb Bukas are attending our next meeting to help inform us before we start deliberating on any potential policy changes or implications of that. So our next meeting is on Tuesday at 4:00 p.m., and the link is available on our website.
Who's next? Mr. Schwartz.
The Acton-Boxborough Regional School District School Committee Community Engagement Subcommittee did not meet on February 17th due to quorum. However, the next meeting of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District School Committee Community Engagement Subcommittee will meet tomorrow morning at 10:45 to discuss ways in which we are preparing for town meeting. Thank you.
Y'all better. That needs to happen. Ms. Wilson.
The School Resource Officers Subcommittee met on February 28th at 5:00 p.m. in a hybrid setting. We only had one member missing due to time conflicts, and it's a good cross-section of people on that committee. Everyone got acquainted, shared their connection to the district, and reasons for volunteering their time to this endeavor. Then we discussed next steps, the plans for further data gathering and analysis of the proposed MOU from the state. We'll meet again in three weeks, March 21st, 20th? I think the 21st, at 7:00 p.m. And that will again be a hybrid meeting.
Did I miss anybody? We're all good? Very cool. Consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda do not usually require discussion and are approved with one vote unless any member would like to hold an item for discussion and a separate vote. We'll read each item name, and if any member would like it held, please say "hold." Members do not have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes. Okay, here we go. Approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of 2023 to 1323 open and to 1623. Item two, recommendation to approve the Carol Hubner Early Childhood Program Parent-Tutor Association budget. Item three, recommendation to approve McCarthy Town PTSO donations to the art display shelving of, so the total is $3,536, and fifth-grade field trip for $1,000. Finally, recommendation to approve the Conant Garden grant of $3,000.
I'll move to approve with gratitude to the donors.
Okay, so if it doesn't count, then it's Adam and Ginny, all those who approve, or yes, all those in favor. Okay. No opposed, no abstentions, yeah? Okay, very good. That passed unanimously with gratitude. Thank you very much, everyone. Who has warrants for me? Anybody?
I move that the school committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling AP vendor warrants as follows. 23-016 dated February 2nd, 2023, in the amount of $997,176.73. 23-016A dated February 2nd, 2023, in the amount of $45.85. 23-017 dated February 16th, 2023, in the amount of $5,531,051.96. Payroll vendor warrants as follows. 23-016PR dated February 9th, 2023, in the amount of $573,867.11. Payroll warrant as follows. P2316 dated February 9th, 2023, in the amount of $2,944,465.94. And student activities warrant as follows. 23-016SH dated February 2nd, 2023, in the amount of $34,997.37.
I'm so sorry, Ben. So that was Liz, and that was Amy. There's nothing I could do. I'm so sorry, Ben. All those in favor? No opposed and no abstentions. Very good. That passed unanimously. Peter, do you have anything in the FYI that you would like to share with us?
I do not.
Brilliant. I'm going to remind everybody, again, babysitters. Annual meeting in Acton is May 1st. Annual meeting starts in Boxborough on May the 8th. Get your babysitters. Show up for town meeting. Here we go. Amy said, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, Tessa said to adjourn?
I did. And Ginny seconded.
Ginny seconded. Oh my God, all those in favor. Good night, everybody.